What did the elections, did you get to the elections?
Yes.
They said, "The only way we wouldn't is if the special election and the presidential are both impounded." They said the likelihood of that is slim.
Well, after what's gone on in Iowa, there's questions about Nevada. Hopefully it won't be.
Came back and called Connie Gibson.
You've got all the retirements. You got all the retirements last meeting, huh?
Oh, you missed that.
Yeah.
It was a lot.
That's a good idea. At 5:59.
Everybody's out. Martin.
Where'd I get these emails just today? Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. I'd like to pause for a moment of silence evening for the following. Patricia H. Blaisdell Schleiber, a graduate of North Syracuse Central School District. Mary Lou Hill, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. And June Douglas, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you.
President, could I say a few words?
Yes, you may.
There'll be few at this time. I personally knew two of these people and I'd like to just share a few things. Mary Lou Hill was a kindergarten teacher at Main Street when Main Street was kindergarten through fifth grade. I had the opportunity to work with her for three years. If you've been over in the building, her room was downstairs where it's very dark or whatever. But she was a phenomenal kindergarten teacher. I had my lunch with her every day. At that time, we had halftime kindergarten. She just was, I believe, what I saw as a teacher and a companion with her on that is that she was full of life, laughter, and she loved her job. She loved her job. Every day, she would talk about each of the students in a positive way. June Douglas was a primary teacher at Lake Shore for many, many years. When Kathy Grammett was principal there, I had the opportunity to do some of my administration work there and got to know June. And she too was a great teacher. And unfortunately, on this board, I've been here the longest in the district since 1971. And it's sad when I see these people that are leaving us. I have a suggestion, and I wish the union was here tonight too, is that the NICEit monthly paper puts down, and he knows what I'm talking about, a list of the people from North Syracuse that have passed away or from West Genesee. It would be nice if we somehow do this kind of thing, whether NICEit can do something to let its members know of these people, the passing of these people, or the district could do something. Anadaga Central, I go online and I see other school districts. Their foundation sometimes puts a passage in of teachers back from the 60s and 50s. And I know our administration has been looking at the history of our district. So I think it'd be nice to start talking about the history of some of our teachers that were in the district in the 50s and the 60s that really were the foundation of where we are today.
Were you thinking something like putting it in the district dispatch like they do in the retiree?
Yeah, district dispatch in the summertime maybe. But I think we should, you know, I think of the tribute to Sylvia last year. It would be nice to look, there are secretaries, there are bus drivers. They have worked for 50, 60 years in this district that have gone away, you know, gone to heaven or whatever, but they need to be recognized. I'd like to see something. You know, we recognize our teachers of today, but they were the foundation of this school district.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Okay, we have a math department presentation. So if you come forward, okay. I'm just pulling it up here. And it's all yours.
All right. I'm John Wojcik. I'm the instructional math coach for the district. I'm just gonna talk to you guys about our new math series we adopted. And I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to do this. So IntiMath is a new math series we adopted. It's kindergarten through seventh grade and we are currently piloting it at eighth grade. This is just a little quote I put in, and the four bolded verbs, I think, really reflect what this series is. Marilyn Mottens is a math guru. And, you know, kids have to reflect, justify, communicate, and explain. And then they will be mathematically proficient. And this series has, makes our kids do that. Why? So the biggest thing is why we need a new math series. You know, this is what schools and hospitals used to look like. And everything's changing. Seating's more flexible, we're collaborating more, surgical rooms look a little different. Math is still math. Two plus two is still four. Five times five is still 25. It's just we want our students to think differently and be mathematical thinkers now and critical thinkers. 21st century skills, the top four all have, are built into this math series. Critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. We want our students to do those four things every day in our math series. And that will help them in their careers later on when they leave North Syracuse. So what a math classroom looks like and sounds like is a little different from what it's been in the past. There's more hands-on, less paper and pencil. We want kids to show their understanding through modeling with pictures, with cubes, talking out the problem, not just showing us on a piece of paper the answer. We want, we encourage students to communicate. We encourage students to have that productive struggle. I think that's the biggest and hardest pendulum paradigm shift of this series for teachers and for students and for parents. Is, it's hard. We want our kids to think about math in different ways. And that's different from how we grew up. That's how, and this series focuses more on the learning potential rather than the right or wrong answer. And it uses real-world math problems, right? We make connections between concepts and real-world applications. And I do apologize if you're following along with the one. I did tweak a little bit of stuff. I do apologize. So math, again, math in the workplace. 94% of all jobs have some type of math. 68 use fractions, decimals, percentages. 29% use geometry, trigonometry. 5% of jobs use calculus. Some of the most profitable jobs in the next 10 years are up there and they all have math as a major requirement. So when we talk about what our kids need to be successful in the world, where in the workplace, there you go. All right. So the learning arc of the program, how is it designed? So it is definitely a flip. When I went to school, the focus was all here in the procedural piece. Now we're building on conception first. We're talking about understanding why math ideas are important and how they're useful and what kind of context they are. We want kids to understand the math. And I use the example of division. When I was in fourth grade and I learned division, I, my teacher put the algorithm on the board, told us, "Does McDonald's serve cheeseburgers?" And showed us how to do it. Then she would call a student up from the board, they would model. Then another student would model and we'd get a worksheet, 50 problems handed in when you're done. Now, if you asked me after I did that worksheet, why the algorithm works, I would look at you and my answer would have been, "Because my teacher said so." We don't want that anymore. We want kids to understand the why before we give them that procedural piece. So that's what this whole program is built on. So every module starts with a green, the conceptual piece. Then it builds and expands into blue, which are different strategies on how to solve the green. Then purple is all applying practice. So take everything you've just learned and now take the strategies that fit you and how you think and apply them to that conceptual piece to help you solve these problems. This is how a module's laid out and I'll show you in a minute how it looks. So every lesson starts with a spark you're learning. And you're gonna see that everything is a lot of word problems, word problems. And that goes back to that conceptual piece. We want kids to understand what the numbers mean and what the concepts are. So it's not just 24 and 3, but what are we doing with that 24 and 3? So how we would start this lesson is, a teacher would read this word problem to the kids and then let the kid solve it. Give them math manipulatives. Give them paper and pencil, whiteboards, markers, whatever they need. And just let them go to town. Show me how you are gonna solve this problem. And then the teacher can then walk around and differentiate through the questioning. They can push their higher-level students to show them different ways and push their thinking. They can scaffold their questioning to give multiple entry points to the lower-level students. So every kid has an entry point into this. We also want kids then to collaborate and communicate. And we have turning talks that are built into the series where teachers can then read these questions and kids can then turn and talk and answer them and look at how others solve them. Because there's more than one way to solve the problem. Once we learn about these strategies, the teacher would then pull random strategies up and the class should talk about why this works or why it doesn't work. Let's focus on why something doesn't work. Too many times, we only focus on the right answer and never on the wrong answer. Then it goes into the learn together, which is a build. So now the students take the strategies that they learned from over here and now apply them to over here. And again, very word problem-based, but again, conceptual. So the kids really have to understand what math. Are they adding? Are they subtracting? Are they multiplying? Then it goes into a check for understanding, which the teacher can give to the students to see if the students really understand what they learned today. So it's kinda like a nice reflection. Then the fourth piece is the independent work where kids can then go off, solve it on their own. And if you notice on the independent work, we, in math, we call them naked problems where it's just 3 times 24 or 2 times 32. We're not giving many of those to the students, right? I don't care if they can just solve it. I don't want an answer of 2 times 32 is 64. I wanna know how you solve that. Give me a strategy. Learn through word problems. So that's what this series is about. Other features of the program, I'm just gonna focus on the first one because I think it's the most important. But there's five different language development routines built into the program. The first one is the three-read strategy. And this is what teachers model for kids because we want the kids to do this independently. So the first time we read a word problem, like in the Spark, we would read it and then ask the kids, "What is this situation about?", not even worrying about the numbers. The second time, we would read the word problem again and then focus on, "What are the quantities in the situation?" So now let's talk about the word, the numbers. And the third time, we would read it, we would then pose the question to the kids, "What possible mathematical questions could you ask about the situation?" Why do we do this? Because we want kids to slow down, think about it, and not just take the numbers. Too many times, the kids just look at two numbers and either add, subtract, multiply, or divide. A quick little story, a mathematician, Robert Kuplinsky, did a research project on this. And he took 60 sixth graders and gave them the word problem. A shepherd has 125 sheep. He has five sheepdogs. How old is the shepherd? And he gave that problem to the students, the 60 sixth graders, gave them a whiteboard and a marker and told them to solve it. 55 out of the 60 either added, subtracted, multiplied, or divided to get an answer because they figured, "Two numbers, I have to do something." And only five students said, "I don't have the information needed to answer the problem." That's what we want when we do the three-read strategy. We want kids to slow down and understand what is the question asking. This whole program is web-based, you know? So teachers and students can access anywhere, they have access to internet. Assessments and assignments can be taken online and graded for the teachers for item analysis. There are math videos to go with the modules. There's family resources like letters and videos. And there's also math games like Waggles, Puggles, and hands-on games built in. What is Waggle? Well, it's flying pigs. So it's right now through grades second through seventh. They are developing one, it for second, for K and 1, that will be coming in the next year. Basically Waggle is like a math tutor. Teachers can assign different skills and different standards to each kid individually. And as the kids work on this program, if they get the answers right, it adapts and gets harder. And if they get the questions wrong, it adapts and gets easier. And it gives all that data and feedback back to the teachers. So the teachers understand where their kids are at on certain standards and skills. There's a ton of differentiation in every lesson. You can see that there's an on-task piece, an almost-there piece, and a ready-for-more piece. And with this came differentiation kits that every teacher got. This is what a module looks like. So when I talked about the green, the blue, and the purple, so you can see day one, we're introducing decomposing fractions into sums. Then the next four days, we're talking about different strategies that are gonna help us decompose fractions. Then the last day, day six, it's all practice and apply. So we're gonna take everything we just learned and now apply. So before, so now we give them the why. We give them different ways to solve it because there's more than one way to solve stuff. And some strategies work better for other kids. And then they're gonna take what they learned here and practice and apply it to now their work. Another reason we bought this program is because three years ago, we adopted Jennifer Lemp's math workshop structures. She has three different structures. So I then took the series and broke it out into her structure. So I helped create this. So when you see a green lesson, teachers can teach it this way with a number sense routine, math task, and task and share. If it's a blue lesson, teachers can then teach it this way. And purple lessons, teachers can teach it this way. Then I took, because this program is very extensive and I like to think of it as, I tell teachers, as a Las Vegas buffet. It's ginormous and huge, but you don't have to eat everything. You're gonna pick and choose what you want from the sources to help meet your kids' needs. So if I'm doing a blue lesson and here are all the different learning stations from the book that I can use. Now, I only might pick two or three of these because that meets the need of my students. That's fine. And in the next module, I might pick different ones. But these are all the different options teachers have at their fingertips available to meet the needs of their students. Again, there's guided flip charts that came with the series. I think this is another huge and awesome piece of the program is it spirals. It not only spirals within your grade level, but it spirals and builds upon every grade level. So for example, this is a fourth grade lesson, I'm multiplying, and it tells the teacher, this is a teacher's manual, where, what they learned in third grade, they had to do a multiplying, what they're gonna talk about, and where are the kids going? And I think that's huge for teachers because if they see that this is fourth grade and it's going on fifth grade, the kids need to master this. But on some standards, they teach it in fourth grade and it's not covered again till sixth grade. So that's not a mastery standard, that's just an exposure standard. So that's really nice for teachers because then they can see what do kids need to master? And what do I have to just expose them to and I'm not worried about that mastery piece? Another huge part of this program is the pre-assessment. So in every module, there's an "Are you ready?" The "Are you ready"s are great, but the real gem is this. So there's three parts to every "Are you ready?" Again, this is a fourth grade "Are you ready?" So if they get a question wrong in part one, I can go down here and it says, "Prior learning", and it tells me I can go back to grade three, lesson 7.2, and reteach that. So now I can fill in the holes that my kids have before I move on to my fourth grade lesson. So now I'm not just building a house on a weak foundation, I'm solidifying my foundation and then going on to build the rest of my house. So that's also how it spirals. I put this video in here, I'm not gonna show you it for time constraints, but if you've watched it or are going to watch it, I think it's just a great summary. It's about five minutes and it's really of why math workshop and IntiMath work and why we wanna use it with our students. Because our goal is to teach them to become thinkers. And I really think that this series does that. I know Mr. Crabtree probably has a thousand questions for me, so I'm gonna stop right there. And again, I wanna thank you for allowing me to, giving me the time to present.
I go last. So I, because I have just 300. I don't even know where to start because... So this is a new series, but from what I gathered here, you're, this isn't a new way to teach math. You've been teaching it this way. I noticed you showed the, the blue-green.
Yep, the Jennifer Lemp model.
Yes, there you go.
Yep. Workshop model.
So I'm assuming this is fitting into that model?
Yes.
Because we've been teaching math by having students explain the concept for a while. I guess my question is, is there a role for math facts? I noticed on that fourth grade pre-assessment, is there a place in the world for math facts? The pre-assessment, they showed multiplication questions and just a place to write an answer.
Yes.
So they're not explaining how they got there? That was something they did in the lessons?
So in that pre-assessment, they're looking at, do they have the foundations to go on to the lesson? So they're just looking at the right or wrong answer because that's just an assessment. So if the kids got it wrong, the teacher has the ability to go back and look back in third grade and say, "Okay, this was taught in lesson 7.2." So now if the kids didn't understand it, I can go back and grab the third... Because the nice thing about this being web-based is teachers have access to every grade level. So if I'm a fourth grade teacher, I have access K through seventh. And so I can go and go back into the third grade in the series, click on third grade, click on that lesson, and get all the reteach material to then reteach my students. To kinda answer your question, math facts, that's, it's a new way to think about it. So we're, when we talk about math, when I learned math facts, it was all about memorization, right? It was the flashcard piece. I would go to, around the world. I remember before the school, my grandma every day would do 10 math and I couldn't get on the bus until I got my math facts right. We're focused less on the memorization piece and on the strategy piece. Because research says that in tough situations, short-term memory turns off where you store your math facts. So we want kids to, when they're in that test situation, if they can't do 8 times 8, "Oh my God, oh my God, I knew that yesterday." Well, do I have a strategy to fall back on? And through the strategies and through, it's like marinating, I call it like marinating a steak. The more that they're exposed to it and the more they do these strategies, that memorization piece is gonna sink in. So we're not solely focused on the math facts and on the flashcards, but more of the process. I call it trust the process, that you're gonna be exposing them to math facts and how to solve these math facts all through K through fifth, sixth, seventh, that the kids eventually are gonna memorize it and not focus solely on the flashcard piece.
So, just a few more. I'm just, I was trying to pull it up at this because there was a part.
Took one of mine away.
Well, I liked, I'll just say that I liked the, you showed there are four or five steps, but you focused on just that one. And in my limited experience, I had the, I don't know if you wanna call unfortunate opportunities to work in math classes in the last year, just out of circumstance. And I found with the word problems, there's a literacy issue there.
Right.
And so I like that, thank you, the three-read strategy where they, it's a battle. They need to know, what is this question all about? What is it asking before we even try and attack it?
Right.
And I think the students that I had experienced would really struggle with that because they wanted to just hit the ground.
Yep.
"How do I do this? How do I do this?" Well, you know, step back. So I do like that. But the one thing that struck me that I think is really important is the context, the piece. I don't know if it's a global context or whatever. Not just the jobs that use math, but what is it, where is the relevance for it right now for this student in this space and time? And I noticed you mentioned that somewhere back in the beginning of this.
Oh, the jobs?
That you're, not just the jobs, but you're trying to put it in a context. I just wondered if there's an example, then I'll quit here where you're, where a teacher is trying to make this relevant to the student. I think that's a big struggle with math. I mean, the flying pigs piece, I think I know why they do that, by the way, because kids will love math when pigs can fly. So I think that maybe, you know.
And I think that was the whole rationale behind it.
I think it was.
I really was.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
I just wonder if there's an example of a context for a math problem.
When, so.
That would resound with the student.
Yep. So at every, like you said, there are a lot of word problems. It's very wordy. All the word problems, when you look back at them, have to do with stuff that deal with real-life situations. So like the, if I go back to... Spark, sorry. So this is talking about strawberries and pints. So again, the teacher can talk about Wegmans, Walmart, the grocery store. This is what your parents do. I know, I taught a lesson a month ago in a fifth-grade classroom and I was at Rite Aid and I took pictures of two different types of Gatorades. There is a big 32-ounce bottle and a six-pack, both on sale, both at different prices. And that was the lesson because the teacher needed help with teaching division. So I said, "Which is the better price? Do I buy the one bottle for 32 ounces at $2 for $3 bucks? Or do I buy the six-pack that's $4.99?" And so if you notice, all the questions, I mean, that's something I came up with to piggyback off this. But all the questions are real-life kind of world things that the kids will experience in everyday life with parents or just with them. So it does give them that, "Why do I need it?" Like, you know, we all say in math class, "When am I ever gonna use this?", right? Well, okay, when, so if, you know, when it talks about pints of strawberries and Wegmans, so the teacher can always quickly say, "All right, let's go, you know, when you go to Wegmans, this is what your parents have to think about. How many, how much is three pints of strawberries?"
Well, thank you. I think that's great and I think that's a really, really important piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I have some questions.
Okay.
I love some things that you said. I'm a business analyst and to think analytically, there's always, you know, more than one way to get to the solution, so I love that. I guess I do have some concerns about, there are some jobs and professions that require precise math. So I'm worried that how that's gonna affect that someday.
Okay.
Also, constantly hearing from parents, math is always changing. I can't help my kid with their homework. You know, what solutions do we have for that?
Okay, so there's a couple. So there's the, those videos, they're called Math on the Spot videos. They show the parents and they walk them through. So there's one per module. They're actually developing more to make one per lesson. So within the next year or two, there's gonna be a video for every lesson. And what it does is it breaks down how to solve the problems. Also, I created a website that's on every elementary school's website. And it's called Parent, and I presented this at the Roxborough Math Night. And it's called, you know, Parent Resources for Math. And I have different ways for parents to help their students. I have different videos up there and I have also different websites where parents can go to, then if you need help with division, you type in division and it'll show them how to solve the algorithm. So there's some stuff built into the program and then some stuff we as a district have then helped to supplement to meet the needs. Because I hear the same thing from teachers, from parents, you know, math, math is changing. And I, like, I go back to the price, it's, math, the way we want kids to think about math is changing, but math is still math, you know? So, so we have different pieces that kind of meet that need. And the company's developing more videos to help meet that need as we go.
We're communicating it to the parents. And so you said this is a pilot? Is it, are we doing it in every?
So it's only a pilot in eighth grade. Sorry, I must miss. We had, we bought the program for K through seventh grade. It also expands into eighth grade. So eighth grade is now piloting this program too.
So what is your feedback you're getting from the teachers?
It's hard. It's very wordy. And my, and my thing is, let's, biggest thing, and this is where that pendulum paradigm shift, you wanna call it, is too many times, and I know from my experience too, is we wanna go in and rescue the kids. And that productive struggle needs to be there. Because that's where learning takes place. Learning takes place in the hard area, the productive struggle. Not to get nerdy on you guys, but I was reading a research paper and not to compare, but it was, it was talking about the Japanese education and they're always top in math. And 44% of their time spent in the classroom is on thinking, struggling with concepts, and doing the, and teachers picking the wrong answer. And then the research said 1% of US classrooms do that. So, because we're more there, we want our kids to succeed, which is great, but we don't allow that productive struggle. So I think that's the biggest shift I hear from teachers is it's hard. But I tell them, "Set the bar high and the kids will rise." I mean, the three reads that I talked about, I have first graders doing that right now. That, you know, they, they stop and they do the three reads. And I had first graders also doing, which I taught a lesson in first grade and I didn't think, and I told the teacher, I'm like, "You're setting me up for failure because you're making me teach this." And it was balancing equations. So the lesson was literally 5 plus 5 equals blank plus blank. And so we, I showed them a seesaw and we talked about, "What do you need to do to balance the seesaw?" And then by the end of the lesson, I had six and seven-year-olds telling me, "5 plus 5 is equal to 8 plus 2 or 6 plus 4." And I was mesmerized by it. So I think that's the biggest feedback I'm getting from teachers and the biggest push. But once again, if they trust the process, the process will work. But once again, if they trust the process, the process will work. The program's only up to eight. Yep, yep.
All right, John.
Okay.
I'm going to start out with the compliments and then I. You know, I met you when you were at Bear Road. I forget if it was third or fourth grade. And I was honored to be a substitute in your classroom. And I saw these kinds of things 14 years ago in your classroom where you, you know, questioned kids, didn't give them the answer. And we're lucky, people around this table, we're lucky to have you in this district. Unfortunately, there's only one of you. And I wish there was more because you're working with at least 3,000 kids, I know you are, and at least 300 teachers. Because I did this job for one year out of my trunk. And after one year, that was, that was enough. So thank you for all that you do for the teachers and for the students. And your job at Roxboro, our superintendent was phenomenal. So these might be easy questions, they might be difficult. Does our program align with the state curriculum and the New York State testing?
Yes.
Yeah. Looking at these, the kids have to write, they have to write sometimes sentences to the questions. They have to show their work. It doesn't matter how they show it, but as long as they show it. So we, this does align very well.
Yep. This is all, this program is all standard-based.
Mary, there goes our test scores.
We've been asking for this.
There you go.
Are the teachers required, and this, you know, really goes to a math director, I guess, required to set a block of time each day for math? And how long is that time kindergarten through like fourth?
I'll answer that one. So math is 60 minutes each day. And the other thing that is happening, there's professional development, the consultants with the company. We're not pulling teachers out of the classroom. We're sending them to the building in the classroom. And John is also there if there's any other additional supports. Instead of people coming and leaving their kids coming down to the district office, we're sending the PD to them.
Okay, now, do teachers have a chance? Here's my concern, okay? I, I have a concern. I hear it from elementary teachers and Dan has heard it. You know, we have so much time for math. This doesn't really go to you. So I guess I, I'll talk about it at another time. But I have concern, when I had Mr. Bowles' daughter in my classroom, that I could take, get away from this curriculum. I could take a day, for instance, a project I did with Sarah was at Christmas time, they all got a pretend check for $250. We use calculators and we use catalogs and they had to go buy Dan and his wife a gift and we worked on that. Do teachers have time to do this kind of project now in math?
Of course. So there are tasks like that built in to the series at every grade level. But there's also a lot of time. So our curriculum mapping and pacing guy team, we have one per grade level. We're trying to finish up that work this year of really mapping and pacing it out. And I kind of went ahead and looked at it, but there is flexibility time to then add time in for that. And if, like, I know on that one, it said everything was one day. But realistically, not in a perfect world, every lesson's one day and some lessons might consume more than one day. So there is that flexibility time in there. It's not 100, it's not 180 days.
Okay. That, that's my concern because we don't want to take creativity. These are wonderful programs and, and you're right, you can pick and choose. You know, you have to do the lesson.
Right.
But you can pick and choose out of that, like you have developed for the teachers that pro, you can pick and choose, yeah. You can pick and choose out of that what, what you want to do. It's not so overwhelming that you have to do everything under learning stations and so forth.
Yep.
John, thank you for coming. I really appreciate this because I wanted the board to see the kind of program that we have at our elementary schools.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Former student.
I'd rather speak, yes. There's a lot of videos and all that stuff involved. Have you run into any technology problems with the kids? Is a lot of this stuff going home or is it all in school? Because, you know, you know, a lot of your, a lot of the lower-income families don't, you know, everybody assumes everybody's got great internet. Well, we shouldn't assume that. And that's, so with a lot of the games and a lot of stuff, I'm just curious, have you run into any technology walls yet or?
Nothing major. So each school uses it a little, the technologically piece a little different. For example, I don't think Roxboro sends home as much assignments to do online than more paper and pencil because of the population, where other schools might send home more online. What I find right now is a lot of the online stuff is getting done in the classroom. So like Waggle, which is online, teachers make that actually on learning stations. So kids are at it for 15, 20 minutes and then they move on to something else. So some of the, and then the assessments, teachers are using that to then get the kids ready for computer-based testing. Nice thing about that for teachers is it grades it for them. So the thing they got to do is take something off their plate. But right now, the biggest thing is some of the videos buffer, don't buffer as well. And that's the biggest issue I've found technology-wise. Other than that, I haven't really heard of anything.
Thank you.
No, no other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're all set there. Mr. Keegan will be giving us an initial budget presentation. Going to use some math now, okay? Word problems.
Well, good evening. Well, tonight, we're going to look at our initial budget. And I should probably just take a second before I dive into the slides to tell you what our intention is when we do the initial budget. And the initial budget really represents kind of business as usual. We're, we're anticipating doing all the same things we've done in the prior year. But we've incorporated the known cost increases. So if there's any, any increase in our costs that we know of, we incorporate them into the initial budget. We also have added some things that are consistent with our Vision 2020. And Dan's going to jump in and talk about those when we hit those slides to, to give a little perspective. So we, we recognize that this is our, our first attempt at the budget. It's not our final budget. There's a lot of work to be done. But let me, let me dive into the slides here and we're going to talk about our revenues, including the, the governor's initial proposal for state aid. We're going to talk again about foundation aid, the tax cap and what that means for the levy, proposed levy. We'll jump into what we're calling our initial expenses. It's our first pass at expenses. And I'll, I'll, I'll let you know what, what that encompasses again in a little more detail. Look at our major initiatives in, in terms of Vision 20, 20, and then, and then talk about the vehicle proposition, our balance sheet, which is our fund balance and reserves. And we'll talk about the timing of the election and vote and then close with the process timeline. I show this slide every year to just emphasize that most of our revenues, this is our projected revenues, $171.8 million, that most of our revenues come from the tax levy and state aid. 54% from the tax levy and almost 42% from state aid. Comparing, if you look, this is, is those same items, but comparing the 1920 budget to the 2021 initial revenues that we're projecting at this time. So we've got a pretty decent increase in general state aid. General state aid is all of our state aid excluding the building aid. The other line items in here are about the same as they were last year. And our building aid is slightly down. And I'll talk, talk about that in a moment. Our tax levy at this point looks like it's going to be about 2.6%. We're still waiting on some information about our pilots. But we're looking at an overall revenue increase of about $5 million or about 3%. Those revenues again are based on the governor's proposal. We are, we remain hopeful that the legislature will provide additional revenues as they work to wrap up the budget here in the month of March and hopefully have a finalized budget by April 1st. The tax cap, I'm going to show you the calculation. And, and that's based on the final consumer price index of 1.81%. Building aid, as I indicated in the previous slide, is down, but, you know, we expected it to be down. We've been paying off our, our, our building-related debt. The timing of this is perfect as we're heading into our Bear Road construction project. And, and I wanted to just mention, believe it or not, we're still spending money on a technology through smart schools. Will have no implications for this budget. We're kind of down to the bottom of the barrel there, but we've got a few more expenditures to make under smart schools. I covered this slide when we talked about the governor's budget proposal. So I, but I left it in just for, for information purposes. I'm going to jump into the two slides that I did speak of before. And I want to just remind everybody that, I'm going to go to the, the slide eight first. When I said that we were going to have a good increase in state aid, I think it's, I think it's important to remember that that state aid increase is, is based on us comparing our original budget, that's the approved budget in the first column, to the executive budget. And as you can see, total with UPK and, and building aid is about a 4.4% increase. The reality of it is, so many of our, our aids, as indicated here, are based on actual activity. So we see a, the first column is the projected aid that we'll actually receive this year. We're getting quite a bit more aid in excess cost, public aid, which is our, for our special ed population. One of the things we'll talk about later in the presentation is that we continue to make significant investments in special ed and, and we are getting aid, additional aid relating, related to that. I want to just use this slide also to illustrate, you might see under hardware, technology, software, library and textbook and BOSIs, that the executive budget is zero. And that's because the governor has chosen to lump those items into foundation aid, which candidly is very confusing, confusing for us and frankly has not been well-received by school districts across the state. And we're hoping that that strategy to combine those aids will be abandoned as we come down the home stretch in the budget. Let's focus, let's talk about foundation aid. We've, we've talked about this every year for many years. That foundation aid was the result of a law school, a lawsuit called the Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit, took place in 2006. And, and the state changed its methodology for providing aid with the base, with the objective of providing enough aid to all school districts that they can provide a sound, basic public education. Well, unfortunately, when the economy hit the skids in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, the state basically suspended its rollout of foundation aid and kind of left us hanging. And we've been in that state now since, you know, we've, they've never been able to fully roll out foundation aid. And, and so this chart, as you can see, we've looked at this before, shows the history of foundation aid. And we are still over $10 million short in foundation aid as of the 1920 school year. And 165 million short over the, the, since 2007, eight. This next chart, just bear with me as I walk you through this. This chart shows, the top of the bar indicates the combined wealth ratio. I think we've talked about combined wealth ratio a little bit. That looks at the property wealth and the income wealth of every school district around the state. So there's a combined wealth ratio number for every school district. The bars here represent the large, the seven large suburban school districts in central New York. We're the bar, the second one from the right with the NSCSD below it. I, out of respect for our neighbors, I didn't put their names underneath the bars. But so that, we're a 0.625 wealth ratio. The average district in New York State is a one. And so we're, we're below average in terms of our, our combined wealth ratio. But you might also note that we are, have the lowest wealth ratio of, of the big seven districts. We're close, but we're lower than the other districts here in, in central New York. The other number in the bar, the 17.92%, that number represents how short we are or the, or the, the foundation aid shortfall. So we are 17.92% or almost 18% under the amount of foundation aid that we should be receiving. And, and you can see our neighbors, what their situation is. The bar to the left is one of our neighbors and they are at 9.6% short. That's a pretty big difference from where we are. And I'll show you in a, in a, in a bit what the, kind of the implications of, of that are. But this, this bar just shows a couple of things. We're all different wealth ratios and there is no logic to how foundation aid has been dispersed, not only in these seven schools, but across our BOSIs and across the state. So foundation aid continues to be a huge issue. I, I mentioned the governor's attempt to consolidate these aids. I think he's really trying to bury the issue. I don't think the issue's going to go away that easily. And I want to make a point on this, this, the governor's budget proposal in conjunction with our tax cap is not sufficient to balance our budget. And we'll, we'll talk about that again in a moment. So preliminary estimate of our tax cap, I'm still working on the pilot revenues. And we'll have that number before we have to file with the state by the end of the week. We're waiting for our attorneys to, to just investigate a few of the pilot agreements that are out there. But right now, we're looking at 2.6% increase in the tax levy at the cap, about $2.3 million or about $61 for a home of $100,000. Let's switch to expenses. I say this every year, we're a people-based business. Most of our expenses are people-related. About 47, almost 48% are salaries and about 31% are benefits. The rest of our expenses include things like debt service, that's paying our debts, all of our loans that we have. BOSIs, we spend a lot of money with BOSIs and that number is projected to be up again next year. You know, we find that BOSIs can provide us with services and opportunities for our kids that we couldn't have combined or provide individually. And we see the benefits of, of working collaboratively with other districts in, in the area to, to meet our, the needs of our district. We, once again, will be doing a special project to, we usually focus that money on security. And we're planning on, we're planning on spending another $100,000 next year and then, of course, equipment. But let's, let's look at the comparison year over year. So we're looking at about a, almost $5 million increase in salaries. And so that may have a, you may initially say, wow, how could that be possible? Well, let me explain that to you. This reflects our new contractual rates with our, with our employees. It also reflects that we didn't budget last year in the 1920 budget for all of the increases that we granted in, in the most recent negotiations. So there's a little bit of catch-up there for that. We also, as a result of our special ed initiative and our, you know, our need to hire additional teaching assistants and special ed teachers, we hired some positions that were not budgeted. And so those are included here as well. And so the, and then finally, we've added some additional positions to meet the objectives of Vision 2020. And so all of that is loaded into that salary line item and the implications of that within our benefits. Debt service is down, as I mentioned earlier, and our BOSI services are up. At the end of the day, we have about a $4.7 million deficit. We're planning on spending $176.5 million against $171.8 million in revenues or about a $4.7 million deficit. Coincidentally, not really coincidentally, but the facts are that if, if we received funding, we're only 9.6% below our, our foundation aid level. We would have another $4.8 million of foundation aid and we'd have no deficit. And by the way, I'm not saying if we got all of our financial aid. I'm just saying if we got the same aid as one of our neighbors, another large suburban school district very close to us with a comparable wealth ratio, if we got the same aid as them, we would have no deficit. Moving right along and just, just, I want to make sure you know what's in this initial budget. So TRS came out, that's a big cost for us, our teachers' retirement system. And our ERS, our employee retirement system. Both of those systems, I always say this to people, were very fortunate to be in New York State. New York State, where those assets are managed very well, both plans are fully funded, and they've both given us the necessary information for us to complete our budget process. And so we're assuming a funding rate of 9.53% for GRS, and about 16% for ERS, both up slightly from last year. We continue, I'm jumping back to the first item, their health benefits. We continue to work with our health oversight committee, with our, our health benefit consultants, to seize every opportunity to both maintain or improve the quality of benefits for our employees while managing the costs effectively. I already talked about salaries and wages, that they reflect our most recent contractual negotiations, and we are continuing to participate in a NISMIC energy consortium, which allows us to buy energy under a three-year agreement, and this budget reflects those costs. And Dan, if you don't mind, maybe you could help us talk a little bit about some of the Vision 2020 initiatives.
Sure. So as you know, with Vision 2020, we've spent a lot of time with inclusive education settings, and really looking at a new model of how we're meeting the needs of our students with disabilities. So in that initial startup, we did hire more teachers, teaching assistants, service providers, to meet the needs of the new model. We're, in year four of that model, and one of the things that we've seen is, just in the past year, 58% of our additions were all special aid-related, and that has been the trend, and it continues to go up. And so what we're going to be doing is, it does not look like that's something that we can continue to sustain over time, so we want to take a look at the model and see, are there things that need to be tweaked? There are some areas or some districts that did go fully with this model with Julie Kostin, and then they've kind of pulled back. So we're taking a strong look at that, because the current way we're doing business regarding the inclusive model financially is not sustainable. So the next slide, when we talk about the middle school schedule, there's been yeoman's work by many people on the new middle school schedule. There have been people that have meeting over and over, and the most recent vote was about 140 to 40 in favor of continuing the pilot. But one of the things that we're seeing is just opportunities for students to get some real-world experience with some of the electives that they're doing. Teachers are having the opportunity for PLC time. Currently, orchestra band chorus are being offered during wind time, but I don't want you to think there has been challenges. It hasn't been just, just rosy. But one of the things that we're doing, we're committed to taking a look at some of the challenges. And I, I met with a teacher who was pretty concerned, but one of the things that he shared with me was that we did away with the homeroom at the middle school level. And when we talk about SEL and things, he said that was a major time where you connected with kids. So that's one of those tweaks that we're looking to do with the middle school schedule. We need to have that home base where teachers can connect with kids and to check in, and that's kind of something that's a constant. So we're continuing to work through some of those initiatives and some of those challenges with the middle school schedule, but we're still moving forward. Social-emotional learning is, and I will say it from, talk from the rooftops, it's number one priority for the district. The mental health of our students, we cannot ignore. So one of the things that we're looking at is for the high school and junior high, increasing the amount of support that we're offering for them as far as social-emotional needs and support. We were looking at an additional dean at CNS to meet the increasing needs of that building. At one point, they had three deans. They're down to now one, just one, and that person is just .8 at the dean job, because she also teaches a class. Provide an additional social worker or counselor support at Cicero L. and Allen Road. Both of those buildings currently have a .5 person that is split. We spent time last year, we added four in the district. This will help make all the buildings whole, so that they have a consistent person that they can go to, and not this person on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and someone else on Monday, Friday. Also looking at continuing our relationship, Liberty Resources is a mental health agency, and contact community services, working with them within our buildings. And a proposed increase in counselor staffing will allow ADAPAP counselors to function with greater focus. So ADAPAP counselors have specific things and lessons that they do within the buildings. And when we did not have 1.0 counselors, those counselors were pulled, thus leaving the, the other piece of their job that they had to do. So it will allow them to continue to do the work that they're looking at. One of the last ones that we're focusing on, career technical education. Courses at, course offerings at CNS, the Junior High, Rock's Middle, and Gillette. Looking at expanding live, a live event production courses, courses that are under development for new technologies such as drones. I think that, that's something that you're hearing more and more about, and even one of our, our students that you've seen before, Giorgio, has already signed up for that aviation course for next year. And there's just going to be jobs, careers, and opportunities for students, the more that we expose them to different career options. The Career Center, working with that person who is full-time, so that they are looking and searching for connections with businesses, so that we can have internships and real hands-on or real-world connections with businesses, so that they know or have a sense of what they may want to do. Because we have students that go on and go and look at, potentially going to college or something, and it may not be exactly what they want. They spend money, sometimes go into some debt, and the more real-world experiences that we can provide with our Career Center is helpful. And then we're continuing to foster our opportunities with BOSEs. We have 47 students have earned CTE endorsement on their high school diploma, and BOSEs is expanding what they're offering. They too are offering a drone technology, as well as a new course is going to be heavy, a heavy equipment operator.
Yeah, so this list up here just shows that we're lucky to have these different opportunities for our kids, and Dan mentioned the heavy equipment repair, operation, and diesel technology. But BOSE seems to be, you know, adapting to the needs of the, of the marketplace, and we're able to, you know, get our kids to participate in those things. I don't know, Dan, do you want to talk about enrollment, while I got this, seems to be...
Don and I, and Bob, also, we look at enrollment all the time, and I think last enrollment was, was 8193. We're down another two students from the week before. Our enrollment's declining. Other central New York school districts are, have declining enrollment. Our enrollment is not declining as much as other districts where there's any need to think about closing a school. We're, we're nowhere near that at this time. But it is something that we need to pay attention to, and one of the things that we're working on is, when you have John Wojcik, and we're offering drone technology, and we're doing different things with the middle school schedule, what are the things that we need to do to sell the district? If, if people are looking to move into central New York, they go and they look, how are, how are the schools doing? What do they have to offer? So that's one of the things that we're looking at, and our, our next phase, we're looking at a promotional video, and developing something that highlights all the exceptional things that go on, because you don't get to see them unless you know. And I'll just do a plug, it was going to be part of my comment, but again, we're going to have someone with Kerry Lazarus tomorrow with extraordinary students. We have so many extraordinary students, and they're, they're there, we just need to promote them and promote what we do. So that's what we're looking to create, excuse me, and develop. I see commercials for Faith Heritage, I see things for Syracuse City, I see billboards in Destiny. So what do we need to do at North Syracuse to promote all the good things? So that's what we're looking to do, to address some of the areas of decreasing enrollment.
We show this chart every year about expenditures per pupil, and there always is a little bit of confusion, so before we dive into the numbers, let me just make it clear. This is simply all the money we spent in the general fund and special aid fund divided by the number of kids. And we pull this data right off of, it's basically ST3 data, that's our financial report. It's provided to us by New York State. We actually extracted through Forecast 5, and we look at all the districts across the state, and, and we try to find, like, who are our peers, who are our comparables? But, you know, it wasn't long ago when we were second to last on this list. So I, you know, while, while being number 18 out of 23 is not necessarily something to write home about, it's, it's an improvement. Couple things to point out on the chart. The bold numbers are the large suburban districts, and we recognize that very small districts that have to have a Dan and a Don, and they can't leverage their fixed costs near as well as we can, and that results in higher cost per pupil numbers. So when we compare our spending per pupil, it's probably appropriate for us to be looking at large suburban districts around the state, and these are the ones that are in our OCMBOSEs, the large suburban districts. The asterix denotes districts that are receiving more than their full phase and level of foundation aid. And I just thought that was an interesting, an interesting perspective. I, I will point out that none of the large suburban districts are receiving their full phase and level, and that those asterix are all over the place. And again, it just goes to show, there's, after years and years of, of peanut butter spreading aid around the state, we are no closer to equitable distribution of state aid than we were than when this process began. And it's, it's certainly frustrating, and it's certainly harmful to the districts that are not at least receiving their full phase and amount. Vehicles. Once again, you know, we, I want to remind everybody, we did an experiment, a pilot last year, we bought gasoline buses for the first time, and on balance, we really are very happy with the vehicles. We've had a few little nits that we're working with our provider, our supplier on, and they've been very responsive, and so once again, we're going to buy gasoline buses. The benefits of gasoline buses, as we articulated last year, far outweigh the benefits of, of managing a diesel fleet. So we're transitioning our fleet to, to gasoline. And so we're going to buy 1065 passenger buses, two 42 passenger special needs buses. We're also, with Matt Irwin on board, he has pointed out to us that we have quite an old fleet of M&amp;O vehicles. The vehicles, we've got a group of vehicles that are 15 years old, old mileage, expensive to maintain, and frankly, not meeting the, as a result of that, not meeting the needs of the team. So where we've put in this vehicle proposition, seven vehicles, trucks slash vans for M&amp;O, and we have a 30-year-old tow truck that's called a cable truck. And I knew nothing about tow trucks, but for, this has been going on for years, candidly, where the mechanics have said, you know, a cable truck is fine for pulling a bus out of a ditch, if on a snowy day it goes in a ditch, but if you got to tow a vehicle from somewhere on the thruway back to our shop, a cable truck's not a way, not the way to do it. And it's gotten to the point where the guys are like, don't call me, I don't want to drive that cable truck. It's so old. It's so old and the technology. So we're going to invest in a new tow truck. We actually did do, had some hard conversations about, why would we invest in a tow truck? Let's call AAA, or the version of AAA that, that, that truck companies call. And we, we kind of did some back-of-the-umbrella math on it. I want to remind you that our aid level is 78.5%. It's pretty high aid, so, and the frequency at which, when you've got a vehicle and a driver stranded on the road somewhere, if we can deploy our own guys to go get that vehicle, it's just, it just makes so much more sense. And so we're, we're feeling like that's the right move for us. We've been, again, we've been talking about it for years. It's a total of about $2.1 million worth of vehicles. Tax impact after transportation aid is about $2.38 for a $100,000 home before STAR. I just want to emphasize, before STAR. In summary, foundation aid, still over $10 million lower than the amount that we believe we should be receiving. Preliminary tax cap's 2.6%. The initial budget, as I said, is about 171.8 million in revenue, or about a 3.5% increase. The expenditures, their initial expenditures are 176.5, and that's an increase of about 9.8 million or 5.88%. We, that does include programmatic enhancements that are in line with Vision 2020. And unfortunately, the state aid and the tax cap just do not allow us to have a balanced budget as our initial budget. And I want to remind everybody, this is not the first time we've come forward with an initial budget that doesn't balance. It's a bit of the nature of the process about how we find out about our revenues. But I also want to say that this is a record. 4.7 million is the highest number we've ever had to deal with, and it coincidentally is a number that if we just got the same funding as our immediate neighbor, would not exist. So that's going to be our pitch to legislators, and hopefully, they'll help us out. We're still working on a number of items. We've got a, our meetings start tomorrow with all of our directors, bringing their budgets forward. We've gotten some previews of their budgets, and we've incorporated some of that into this document, but we're, we're looking forward to those discussions over the next month, and, and continuing the discussions with the board as we get closer to May 19th. Same information as we always have had, we'll have our vote on Tuesday, the 19th, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., with the voting distributed between the district office and Cicero L. Connie Gibson will be working on voter registration, as outlined here. I want to finally point out about our, just to remind people, we do have a fund balance. It is projected to be about 3.7% of our budget, and I'm comparing it now to our projected expenditure budget, 176.5 million. So there is some capacity to shore up our expenses by using fund balance. We do have reserves, but they have been depleted a little bit over the last year as we've worked on our capital projects. But we do have some reserves that, that I can at least say that the primary liabilities of the district, excursory, workers' compensation, debt service, are covered with these reserves. Our next meeting that we'll be talking about the budget will be March 16th, and at that point, we'll have a update, hopefully, more information from Albany, more information from our directors, and some fine tuning that'll be done with all of our leadership here at the district between now and then. We'll have the final tax cap for you, and the documentation for our bus bond proposition, and our notice of budget hearing and election. Any questions?
Yeah, I hear, about the calendar, you got the right. I just want the board to be aware that we vote, we adopt the final budget on April 6, and that's during vacation. So I think Connie needs to send something out to know who's going to be there. We need to have six people there. It's very important that we have a quorum, you know, and it's during vacation, some people do go away. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. And my concern, I brought this up before, is that, and Mr. Sterpi was at one of our meetings, is that there's no push for that governor to get a budget on time. He, he, you know, his, his streak is over, and I'm just nervous about April 6, that we may not have the funding that we're wanting, so that, it's very important that we talk to our legislators, to really, really start pushing, pushing them to, to get this done. I mean, I opened up the paper on Monday, and it's always about vaping and marijuana and all that, and there's nothing about education. It's just, it's sad, it's sad this year.
Thank you for mentioning the April 6 date being a vacation day, because that is the Monday, the first Monday, the beginning of vacation, and so we certainly could push this out another week, but the following Monday is also part of the vacation. So it doesn't necessarily help us, but it might help us if we are still waiting on money, information from Albany.
Because the concern I have, and this happened years ago when I was a teacher, is that we never got a, a money, you know, increases until May, you know, it's like that. And what happens is, once you vote on that amount of money, you cannot add anymore to that budget. You know, that's it. That's the amount of money that the taxpayers have to vote on, we can't add after, when we vote. And that's just my concern.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Okay, I don't have a sign-up sheet. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments from the audience today? We do not, okay. Thank you. Then Board of Education Committee reports, I will start with Mrs. Scanlon.
Thank you. We met, the policy committee met on February 10th. We reviewed five policies. Two, we decided to table, they needed additional research and work to be done on them. Three are on tonight's agenda. One's a first reading of a new policy for independent study. We noticed that... We noticed that education law allows for it, but we didn't have a policy in place that the boundaries and rules around it. And then we have an amend and re-adopt and a re-adopt without change. And we looked at our upcoming policy review schedule. We had nothing up for March that needed to be reviewed, so we decided to cancel that meeting, so we're not meeting again until April fourteenth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crabtree.
All right, we missed you at our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
We met on Abraham Lincoln's birthday, February twelfth, and our guest speaker was Central New York School Board Association, Derek Dorsey. It was great to meet him. He's new to the job, and he talked a little bit about the programs that he's going to offer. Mr. Keegan went through, again, the governor's budget proposal, looking at the governor's proposal and how it affect North Syracuse. Our next meeting is March fourth, and I have asked the interim superintendent of OCM BOSI's, Chris Todd, to come, and the reason I've asked Chris to come is that he is directly sees the commissioner weekly or bi-weekly, and he's the legislative chair. So he will be able to tell us what's happening in Albany, and so I've asked him to come to the next meeting, is March fourth.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to mention that the Board Budget Subcommittee did meet this week. I was present, along with Mr. Crabtree and Mrs. Scanlon. We can't have up to four, and so I'll make sure before the next meeting that Connie puts that out to see if anybody else happens to be available for the next meeting. And is there a more OCM BOSI's report?
I'll do real quickly, you know, each of you received the report, but there are three things I want to talk about. Don and Dan went and saw our deputy superintendent give the budget highlights of 2020 and 2021, and you will be voting. It was on the chart, on the BOSI's only the administrative budget, which is an increase up a certain amount of money. But a good thing for North Syracuse is because we purchased the Crown Road, they decreased to our district for rental capital administrator, 17,000. So we are saving money because we purchased that property. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, there is an article that I gave each of you, I asked Colleen, or Connie to give you. We were in education week, and one of our programs that's right in North Syracuse at Driver's Village, it's one of the best in the state, was in the magazine article, so please read it, because it's what I think Dan is going towards in North Syracuse, is getting our students out there in the workforce and what's needed. And the last thing he mentioned, Dan did also, is the Tracy Road Equipment Open House that we had. I was enabled to go, but over sixty parents and students attended that want to be part of this program, hoping to see some North Syracuse students. So that's my, and my report.
Thank you. Superintendent comments? Superintendent Bowles?
Yes. So this past Saturday, we hosted a VEX robotics competition, and Mr. Crabtree was there at our junior high school. There were over twenty teams from around the state, as far as Queensberry, New York, if anyone knows where that is, north of Glen Falls. We came in first place in the overall teamwork challenge, and also first place in the robotic skills champion competition. So these are the things that our kids are being exposed to. I didn't have, tell Lori Cook, she's going to get some pictures up on our website so you can see what transpired at that time. Again, I mentioned Brianna Ballard. She will be on Carrie Lazarus starting tomorrow at 5:30 PM, extraordinary talent. I think you may remember, she was the young lady that came up with the song for CNS, so she will be on the news. And on the twenty-sixth, the following morning, it'll be at 6:30 playing. A lot of great things are happening around the district. Winter Guard held a competition on the eighth, which was wonderful. We did have some other things going on as far as indoor track, cheerleading, section three champions, swimming and diving, people heading to states. But one of the things that is just, I saw a young lady who performed in Guys and Dolls, and her name is Ava from the junior high, and she also performed for the Honor Roll Breakfast. If you haven't seen this young lady sing, it was something to behold. I know Lori posted it, and there's been so many hits. She sang with another young man, Shallow, and you will see this young lady in the future. She is that good. So these are the things, that we have talent all across the district, and it's not just athletic. So we have people that are in our science olympiad, in our VEX robotics, in our performing arts, and that's one of the things that we will continue to do to promote our district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have comments for the Good of the Order or anything else? Seeing none, we'll move to routine action items. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of February third, 2020. Motion from Terry, seconded from Bob. Well, you were waving, okay. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? Those are carried. If I could get a motion to take items B, C, and D together. B is for the placement of disabled students by the CSC. C is consideration of placement of preschool disabled students, and D is consideration of the placement of home instruction programs as recommended by the committee. If I can get a motion for those three, motion from Mark, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Those are carried. A motion to put E, acknowledgment of business reports, before us. A motion from George, seconded from Mary. Any discussion? Can I just make one comment, and not being picky, but if we could scan those in so they, some of them are upside down, so I was, sometimes I go sideways, but when they go 180, it was difficult to read. Whoever's scanning those in, I just thought I'd mention that, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Discussion action items A, rescission of standardized bidding resolution. I got a motion, put that before us. Motion from Mike, seconded from Terry. Any discussion? If, Don, could you just give us a quick, as you did before, on what that is? Yes.
In the past, we've, and it's not very, it's not unusual for school districts to do this, if they've got a particular mechanical system, they don't want to have a different mechanical system in every building, they want to have some standardization. It makes sense operationally, maintenance, training of employees, tools, and all those things. But, you know, many of our systems are older now. We're in the process of bidding the Bear Road project, and we want to make sure that we create an open field, that we at least get bids on all systems. So we don't want to have standardization that might limit the bidding around Bear Road. And what we'll do is, we'll look at what kind of bids we get on Bear Road, and it may, in fact, set the precedent for, you know, we might be coming back to the board at some point in the near future and saying, hey, we found some technology, some systems we really like, we'd like you to go back now and standardize those. But at this point, we didn't want to limit people that were bidding, and so we're asking the board to rescind that.
Okay, great. Any questions on that? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is carried. B and D, C are roll call votes, so I am going to ask for a motion, put B before us. Motion from Aaron, seconded from Mary. And I'm going to read the resolve, because that's the action item that we'd be approving. Be resolved by the Board of the District. As follows, the Board of the District authorizes its attorneys to settle the tax assessment proceeding with petitioner for prospective reduction of the property's assessed value pursuant to the proposed settlement in the table listed in the attached memo. This resolution would take effect immediately. If you could do the roll call for us, Mrs. Andon? Aye.
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 Okay, that motion is carried unanimously. Item C, if I get a motion, put that before us. Motion from Mary, seconded by Aaron. The resolved here, Board authorizes the district's attorneys to engage the services of an appraiser to produce an appraisal report for this matter at a cost not to exceed $17,500. District Treasurer is directed to disperse the funds stated herein for such appraisal without further action of this board. The resolution shall take effect immediately. Roll call? Aye.
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 If I could get a motion to take items D and E together. Motion from Terry, seconded by George. D is a recommendation to create one FTE, excuse me, special education teacher at Cicero L., and E is a recommendation to create one FTE teaching assistant at Roxborough Road Middle. Any questions on that? None, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Can I get a motion to put F, surplus of non-marketable marketable equipment, before us? Motion from George, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And a motion to take the three policies that were reported to us by Mrs. Scanlon, items G, H, and I. Can I get a motion to put those three before us? Motion from Mary, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Those are carried. Personnel report A, if I could get a motion, please. Motion from Mary, seconded by Terry. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And support staff personnel report B, can I get a motion to place that before us? Motion from Mike, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. I'm going to make a motion for executive session. Everybody asks for a second. After I make the motion, a motion is for the purpose of reviewing the employment history of three individuals with no action to follow. Can I get a second? Second from Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Motion adjourned the meeting. Motion from Aaron, seconded by George. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:21 PM. Thank you.